Dr. Rockwell, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good afternoon. I want to call our meeting to order at 2:34 today's date is September 16th. And this is our School Board of Latre County Workshop today. We don't have the pledge, so don't worry about standing. Ms. Johnson, do you have any citizens registered to speak this afternoon?
Yes, ma'am. We have one speaker, Taylor Gilfillan.
All right, we'll go ahead and receive our citizen input at this time. Welcome, Mr. Gilfillan. If you would state your name, you'll have two minutes with the board.
Excellent. Good afternoon, everyone. Taylor Gilfillan, former district employee and current member of the District Advisory Council. Want to share a couple of thoughts on the report. First of all, just overall, I'm glad that it exists. I'm glad that it was done. I think for the first time since at least 2021, it's great to see us set goals and measure them and share that back. So just overall, I think that's my biggest takeaway. I have some thoughts on what's here in the report and I have some thoughts on what's not here. I think thoughts on what's here, as far as the third reading camp goes. I saw that only 33% received the good cause promotion. I would just be curious about what, for the other 67% of those students, what sort of supports and things are they getting in the classroom right now that weren't able to get good cause by the end of the, by the end of the summer? I'd also just be curious about what percent of eligible students attended and actually came. I know there's some requirements set by the state, just how many of the kids that we were supposed to get there actually attend? For the surveys, always great to include teacher and admin voice. We should continue doing this. I'd also be really curious to hear what we heard from parents. I didn't see any input from them shared in the report as well. Couple other thoughts on the surveys. I saw there were six questions posted for admin, two for teachers. Were those the only questions asked? Would just be curious if there was other results, if they could be shared too. As far as the Likert scale goes, I would just offer just take a second look at that. I'm not sure that the poor, fair, good, excellent is a valid piece to use. I'd consider looking at either behavioral or anchored scales or something that's more objective. Couple of thoughts on what's not here with my last 20 seconds. ESOL Summer Program. Back in April 2025, that was one of the programs we approved. Did it happen? If so, I didn't see anything about it in the report. And then as far as enrollment and attrition goes, I didn't really get to see the answer of how many kids we served and did we serve the kids we set out to do? So that's my time.
Thank you, sir. I think some of those will maybe address the thing. Ms. Johnson, do we have any other speakers signed up? All right, we'll bring it back. And now I'm going to turn it over to staff from curriculum. I see they're already in place. Or Dr. Patton?
So just as an introduction, so this is our summer school E S Y Extended School Year information. So thank you, board. We had multiple conversations about this leading into summer school, trying to ensure that we have very set criteria. And then, as you know, too, we, especially for third graders, use different tests. So we made sure to go through and not only just give an KPI for the different tests, but also the key performance indicator and then the goal and the measurement, but to make sure that they were matched per, per different type of test. And then also just wanted to thank our staff. It's taken a long, long time to get summer schools, the E S Y program set up. And then also for these assessments to ensure that we're tracking this. So what we're excited about is that we now at least have a foundation that we're going to start from and with data so that we can measure things moving forward a little more collectively. Just for an example, we had brought one round, if you remember, of the assessments and thought we could just look at it again. So we kind of went from that mid 50s to 100%. So that then now begs the question, well, wasn't that an aspirational goal? So with no data from previous years that we could see in the near recent past, we'll now at least have some kind of a set. I know too, when we looked at our 33% that were able to be, meet those standards, we just, we couldn't find others. We found Browards. They were at 23%. So we felt like that's at least better than, not that we're competing, but there was no benchmark for us to see what was what. We only found Browards after summer school when we tried to see where those results are. So just to say all that, I want to really thank staff for the countless hours going into the extended school year program and then countless hours afterwards to try and see some of those data points. And so you also got some additional data points that we sent out this morning from some questions. So like in a year from now, we can do an even more improved job to include those kind of data points. So with that, we're going to let Dr. McClooney have the privilege of sharing her collected information that she's put together for us today. Thank you.
And before you start, Ms. McClooney, how many days are summer school? Is it 15 or 21?
There were 15 days.
15 actual school days, Monday through Thursday? So no Friday? Okay, 15 days?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, go ahead. And tell me, how would you like us to, would you like for us to hold our questions until you get like to a certain point or at the end?
Questions at the end will be fine.
At the end, you sure?
And one of the things that we also talked through extensively in the last couple of days is when you think about who this summer school was intended for, particularly third grade being the largest, that these were our lowest performing students that need the most help. They were level one students. So they had 180 days to try and clear through. And yet, really, if you still think about it, how did 33 manage in 15 days to clear through when they had 180 during the year? Really posed a big question. We actually spent quite a while talking about that. So our summation is, is that when it's, it's almost like we're on little research study because when you spend, as we figured it out, was four hours and 15 minutes, not counting their lunch period, just focused on literacy. In the day, they get 90 minutes a day. Here, they were getting four hours and 15 minutes. So how did you catch up 33% of these kids in 15 days when they've been in school for 180? So it kind of begged the question to wonder, if we did literacy for four hours every day, where would we be? But we squeeze in math, science, social studies, recess, art, music, PE. So there's not a definitive answer, but it was interesting as we sat and thought about when you, it shows that when they really did have intense amount of time, because these again are the lowest performing kids to have them clear through, but just interesting. They had no other subject that was like kind of throwing them off. They were very focused. We used UFLY was the standard across the board, which, you know, we've talked about that numerous times, that it's not designed for third grade, but when you have the struggling kids, it still is because they still are needing that phonics, you know, so we, we looked at that. We also read and looked at, and I'm stealing a little bit of your thunder, so I'm sorry. So just to say, it's been interesting to listen and talk through a lot of this. So thanks.
And before you start, joining us online today is Dr. Rockwell and Mr. Vu. They, they're not here. And so they may have some questions as well. Dr. Rockwell and Mr. Vu, I think you may have heard Ms. McClooney ask us to hold our questions until the end. I'm going to try real hard, okay? So if that-
Yeah, yes, I, I will try my hardest.
Okay. And Ms. Green, if you would help me at the end to monitor them because since I can't see them on the screen, okay? All right, Ms. McClooney, I don't think we're, we're going to let you go now. I'm going to turn you loose.
Thank you so much. Before I get started, I would like to thank Dr. Patton and Dr. Atria, along with our teaching and learning team, administrators, teachers, food service, transportation, Dr. Edwards, Ms. Terry, with all of their help, they made E S Y a great success. And so I just wanted to make sure that I thank them before getting started. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for allowing me to share our overview of the Extended School Year Program or E S Y. Our E S Y program this summer kept our students engaged, reinforced core skills, and ensured continuation of learning to prevent summer slide. There was a district-wide concentrated focus on literacy, supported by intentionally designed curriculum guides for teachers, created by our curriculum specialists. Teachers participated in a district-wide first-ever E S Y pre-planning training, focused on UFLY instruction, use of instructional materials, E S E accommodations, and use of technology, which they found to be very helpful and impactful in creating a strong start to E S Y. At the elementary level, students focused on literacy, and those at non-Titel One schools participated in STEAM activities to build critical thinking and creativity. In middle school and high school, there was an emphasis on credit recovery to support more, or to support, excuse me, promotion and graduation. E S Y also provided targeted support for students in our exceptional education program and for our English language learners, preparing all students for a successful school year and reflecting on the district's community or commitment for opportunity and excellence. So now we'll look at student attendance and participation. Our summer school saw a strong overall attendance across the district with several clusters exceeding 80% in multiple grade levels. This success is attributed to strong communication at principal and AP meetings with our administrators, with strong communication to our teachers at the pre-planning. We had sample phone call scripts for teachers that they could use when students experience absences. And we also created support logs to ensure wraparound services for our students and families when absences did occur. With strong attendance this summer, we did have a good programmatic goals and outcomes for our, the programs that were offered this summer. And so we'll look at those now with our key performance indicators. So with our programs that we offered this summer, one of our programs was voluntary pre-kindergarten. And this is mandated by state statute to ensure that we do have kindergarten readiness. This program was held June 11th through July 31st at Duval Early Learning Academy and Tewilaga Elementary. This program focused on literacy growth with pre- and post-test. While the key performance indicator set a goal of 75% of our students to reach above the 40th percentile, we did have 60% of students participating to meet this benchmark. Also, we offered our voluntary pre-kindergarten summer bridge program. This was a new initiative that was launched by the state of Florida this past summer. This program was mandated for all students scoring below the 10th percentile, and this was offered June 16th through July 29th at Duval Early Learning Academy. With a direct family outreach and pre- and post-assessments on alphabet knowledge, 67% of our kids demonstrated at least a 50% increase in this program. With our third grade reading camp, this program was mandated for all third graders who had not yet met promotion requirements. Students could earn good cause promotion by meeting benchmark scores on AMIRA, ISIP, Stanford 10, or the FAST Grade III ELA Assessment. While the KPI was set at 75% promotion, 33% earned good cause promotion at the end of E S Y. We did have additional students to earn a level two or higher on the July FAST Assessment, bringing the total promotion percentage to 65%. We did offer a Title I Extended School Year Program. This was provided to our first and second graders not meeting grade level expectations. This program focused on literacy and foundational skills. The KPI did aim for 100% of students to increase their ISIP skill score by five points. We did have 58% of our students to achieve this benchmark. With our kindergarten extended program, the district provided that for our kindergarten students not meeting grade level expectations. This program also focused on literacy and foundational skills. We did set the KPI at 100% of students to achieve a five-point skill score increase. We did have 63% of our students to meet this KPI. With our STEAM, so we offered a science, technology, engineering, and arts program at our non-Titel One schools. So this was offered at Childs, Hidden Oak, Meadow Brook, and Talbot, and it served first and second grade students. It integrated literacy and foundational skills with STEM exploration. Their growth was also measured by their ISIP pre- and post-test. While the KPI aimed for 100% to increase their ISIP sales, scale score by five points, 60% of the students participating met this KPI. We also had program services for our E S E students. The Extended School Year Program for our K-12 students with IEPs provided services beyond the regular school year, addressing academics, communication, social skills, independent functioning, and healthcare needs. Every student had individualized goals aligned with their IEP, ensuring instruction and support tailored to their specific needs. And last but certainly not least, we had our middle school credit retrieval program known as CROP, and also our adult high school co-enrollment. Our CROP supported our middle school and high school students who needed to recover semester credits for promotion or graduation. The middle school summer CROP program served 196 students who collectively earned 147 half credits. While the adult high school co-enrollment program served 403 students, earning 309 half credits. Students completed one quarter or one half credit course at a time, and 77% of participants earned their half credit with a C or higher, underscoring the importance of providing continued opportunities to help students stay on track and meet promotion and graduation requirements. We did offer a survey to our administrators and our teachers. In highlighting some of those strengths, it was very important for the district to gather feedback from administrators and staff to determine what went well and to identify areas for growth and adjustment. The survey received a 36% response rate from administrators and a 38% response rate from teachers, which was slightly below the 45% response rate on the district climate survey. Responses did highlight the dedication and professionalism of staff, the responsiveness and the presence of district and administrative teams, a strong support provided for behavior management, instruction, and logistics, clear daily procedures, helpful training, improved instructional materials, a strong communication contributed to smooth operations, enhanced student engagement, and focused on minimizing our summer learning gap. We did also seek feedback with for improvements or areas of continued growth. So administrators and teachers provided valuable feedback on areas of growth and enhancement to the program, suggestions focused on continuing to strengthen district-level planning and presence for E S E services. Feedback also included exploring an extension of CROP programming into mid-July, sharing baseline and academic behavioral data with host sites prior to the start of E S Y, limiting our cluster sites to two or three, rotating cluster responsibilities, and considering alternate calendar options such as Juneteenth. In closing, E S Y did serve as a vital opportunity for enrichment, intervention, and continued growth for our students. Again, thank you so much for your time, your attention, and your continued support for all that we do for our students, staff, families, and community in A C P S.
All right, thank you, Ms. McClooney. I see Mr. Kuhn at the lectern. Are you, do you have a?
No, ma'am. I'm just running the PowerPoint.
Oh. You were the clicker. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. McClooney. So since you all are here, I'm going to start with them online first. I emailed staff a whole lot of questions, but I'll come back to mine. And I did get some response. I just want to have a little bit more discussion. Mr. Vu and Dr. Rockwell, I'm going to start with you all since you're not in the room with us. Do, so Mr. Vu, would you, do you have any questions or anything that you want to?
Yes, yeah, thank you. So the first is just basically on all the KPIs. So some of these we got a lot closer to than others, some we didn't. And I just really want to know what are the steps we're going to have to improve our practices and ultimately to meet the metrics? And if we're going to be presented that in the future, individual meetings or at a future workshop? Maybe like the next one about summer school.
So if I, did you get his question? You said, Mr. Vu, I want to make sure I understand you. You said you appreciated the KPIs and that we got closer to them, and you wanted to know what were we doing to improve our practice? And what else was it?
Yeah, improve our, improve our practices to ultimately meet the, the KPI goals? Yes. And how will we get that information? Will it be individually? For board member in individual meetings, or will this be presented at a workshop?
Yeah, so for right now, we'll do it at individual works, or individual meetings for right now. But we want to get back together with our crew a little bit to discuss that further.
Okay.
Thanks.
Of course, yeah. And I'd love to see data based on like, who didn't, for example, like earn the promotion versus like attendance. And then on CROP, you know, one of the thing I noticed is that 196 students, but only, not only, but 147 half credits earned. And so basically my, my wondering is how many students didn't earn credits ultimately? And then, you know, what was the attendance rate of these particular students that didn't earn the credit? And this is my own experience as a CROP teacher, you know, sometimes you have some kids who work a lot faster than others, more dedicated, but they'll like end the summer program with like an 80% completion or something and almost there, you know, for the, for the credit. And are we still going to support them if they're going to try to work?
I guess if you have an answer, you can. I actually had a question about CROP, like if they didn't finish, are they able to, if they didn't finish during the summer school, could they continue to work afterwards at home if they had access to a computer?
Thank you. So several, several questions to address. I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind in terms of the credit retrieval program is there's rolling attendance. We are provided a certain number of seats. And as students complete and that seat becomes open, new students roll in. So what generally will happen, whether we're talking about extended school year or credit retrieval that's offered during the school year, is we will have students who may not finish within that allotted period of time because they started much later. They didn't begin at the initial onset of, of the first day of the program. So I think, I'm hopeful that that answers Mr. Vu's question a bit. Your question related to do they have the opportunity to complete? They do. We have a number of schools that allow additional time past those particular days, but even in circumstances where that time might be date certain for an ending when the program begins again in the following semester, students simply pick up where they left off.
Mr. Vu, did you have anything else before we, I ask Dr. Rockwell?
No, no, thank you.
All right, thanks. Dr. Rockwell, do you have any questions?
I just had one more comment. You know, I thought it was good that we looked after the fact at, at whether we could find data from other districts on how their summer school programs went. And, you know, I'm glad we at least were able to find data from Broward County. It would be great if we could find data from more counties. And, but I think rather than looking for can we find data after the fact, it might be helpful to look and see what kind of goal-setting other counties are doing. I know when we initially set these goals, I was a little bit concerned because 100%, even 90% would be, those would be extremely high goals. Those would be extremely high goals. You know, 100% is perfection. Expecting that just seems like setting yourself up to not meet your own goals. But it's clear from our data that, you know, we set goals without having data from prior years. And so, you know, I think that that our issue is not necessarily in our outcomes, though obviously we would like to see more than 30... More than a third of our students get good cause promotion. But I think we have a combination of, you know, we can do better to help our students, but also maybe we didn't set the best goals. And so now we have one year of data of our own, but we could all... And we can look at other districts, but I think it would also be helpful to look at what kinds of goals other districts set before we come up on setting goals for the next summer.
Yeah, and that's assuming other districts even set goals. That's not...
Yeah. I mean, that's assuming hopefully some of them do.
It's more like, let's just put the kids in summer school. So I prefer to do what we're doing. But again, just I think what was hard was that, remember, we brought this to the board once, and then it was told your goals are too low. So then we went to the 100. So I don't care. It's not the ping pong back and forth. It's at least we have data to start with. That's the key of this. So I don't want, you know, staff even got a little, you know... Well, we brought goals and they were realistic, and then it wasn't good enough, so we set them higher, and now they're saying we're too high and we're not realistic. So I'm not into the blame games. What I'm into is that I'm proud of staff, that we have goals. They were very clearly articulated, and the fact that they looked, here's a Mira's goal, here's SAT goal, here's the pre-K goal. So I think what we'll become is a model for other districts to say, how should they do their summer schools, you know? And with us putting it in this, they could see, here's a district that did take it. But again, too, it's always how many days they did their summer schools? How many days did we do our summer schools? So but regardless, I'm just... I'm proud that, you know, we're on the right track of this. You know, if it's not 100% right, it's certainly on the right pathway.
Thank you for that, Dr. Pen.
I just want to chime in really quick. I do agree with a lot of what Dr. Rockwell says, but I also just do want to like counter a little bit. I personally don't feel like the goals listed here are unrealistic because the 100% ones are about scale score growth, which if you're in a actually attending, engaged, you should be able to meet that. So, you know, I like the KPIs as they are. I just want to put that there. Thank you.
So I was wondering, we had summer school in '24, and we had no data to look at for any outcomes from students? I mean, I know it's a different group of students, but just to see how we did with our kids for the previous year, that was one of my questions. But before I start, I'm just going to go ahead and say this, because I keep looking at attendance here. So I ask about attendance for the younger kids. And I'm just going to tell y'all right now, we, as a district, we need an attendance campaign. We have got to like get people... They should know it, but this has got to be our mantra, we need you in school. You can't learn if you're not here. And so for me, it was 15 days, and I don't think... I have two schedules that we... That were given to me. One was for the entire summer, and the other one said averages as of June 27. And there was... I was like, ooh, man, once one grade did have 100% attendance. I don't know the sample size, how many kids it were, but for the cluster site for fourth grade as of June 27, said it was 100%. And to me, if it's just 15 days, I'm thinking teachers and the kids should be there. But I mean, my kids know I... You should ask my kids. They'll tell you, man, my mom had us going to school like every day. I mean, they almost had to be... Because that's how I was raised. You had to almost... I didn't send them to school sick before anybody like freak out on that, right? And fortunately, they were always pretty healthy. But school attendance was really important. That's for me as a child, for my family, as well as when I raised my kids. So but I do think, and I've... Dr. Elbison and I have had a conversation, so she knows how I feel about this school attendance thing here. But before I go with my questions, I'm going to leave it to my colleagues. Dr. McNeely, do you have any comments or questions?
Mrs. McLeeny, thank... Miss McLeeny, I don't know why I said Mrs. Miss McLeeny, thank you so much for the overview of what took place during the summer program. Recently, I guess you sent it yesterday or day before, the children who were retained, the children who after summer school might have been promoted, the children who were promoted through a Mira, through ISIP, and so forth with SAT 10, and I think you had one other ELA. But those numbers were surprising, especially one particular school that I'm very, very concerned with in the eastern quadrant of how many children were retained. It was alarming as a matter of fact, and I'm just wondering, how are we going to facilitate for those student, those particular students and all of the rest of the students? But they certainly need to be secured and worked with extra resources. I do know in the past, we've had where children who were tested after the first couple of weeks of school and maybe could move forward to the next grade. Are we still doing things like that? And if so, how many children are we looking at in these different schools where you sent us all of this... All of these things by the children who were retained?
Yes, ma'am. Students do have until November 1st to be promoted to the fourth grade. And I know Ms. Dell... Ms. Dell did send out information, and so she is collecting that now. So students are...
We already received that? I'm sorry.
It's coming in now, but I know students are being given the opportunity to test to be promoted to the next grade level currently right now.
I am collecting the data for the students that were either promoted based on the PM1 FAST third grade if they get a Level 2. I'm collecting that right now. I don't have all the schools, but I'm working on that, as well as students that took the ISIP since the beginning of school. So we have had several students that have been promoted since the beginning of the school year, but I will have a complete list of that by Friday.
So Ms. Dell, my question then would be at this point, and that could be an administrator's decision at their individual schools, how many parent conferences have been held to share this kind of information with parents? Some parents understand that, some parents do not. What are we doing to get the parent, the responsible parent in to understand that this student has a possibility of moving on to the next grade by November 1? And then what happens? Does, you know, they have not been in the class that they may be going to as of November 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th? What happens at that point with the teacher? Do they get extra resources? What happens because those students have not been with the class that was already there, if you understand where I'm going?
I do. They will provide supports to transition those students. And for the students who are being promoted based on PM1 FAST, most of our, believe I, third grade ELA FAST has been completed. So those students, if they got a Level 2, they would have already been promoted or in the process of right now. Our goal was to assess our students as early as we could so they wouldn't miss. If they were eligible to go to fourth grade, we wanted to make sure that they weren't going to miss a large portion of fourth grade. So the PM2 or the PM1 FAST is already completed. Any students that made the Level 2 should have been promoted already. The ISIP, they can only take that once every 30 days. And so depending on when they took it, we gave them a window at the beginning of school for them to take that, and then they have 30... They have to take it again in 30 days. Do I know how they're letting parents know? I am not aware of how each school is doing that, but I have been in communication with all schools about the process of letting them know how they can take the ISIP. Is the ISIP appropriate for every student who was retained? Because if they were at such a level, they would have to jump a great deal. You know, is it appropriate? But every student in third grade is taking the ISIP. So if a retained third grader took it at the beginning of school year and made that score, they were promoted. If they take it again in 30 days prior to November 1st and make the 50th percentile, they will be promoted. So every student is taking it every 30 days, regardless of where they were on ISIP during the summer or at the end of last year.
Thank you for that. And I'd really like to know, and I guess that would happen at the next data dialogue or whatever that principals could share, what's being done exactly for the... Because I'm looking at, I'm just going to call it, because it's... Williams had 30 children in third grade retained. How many attended? Did you...
Attended summer school?
No, no, meaning how many of the third graders at Williams? If 30 were retained, how many actually came to summer school? 30? Was it 30? Was it 50 children?
They weren't all required to come, no. So I can look back. We'll have to go back to the summer school list and find out how many at that particular school attended. But it was offered to every child who got a Level 1. And it was offered to everyone, and parents were encouraged, and there were opportunities...
When you say encourage, Ms. Dell...
They were given... They were emailed, they were called. Actually, I had schools, they were calling to make sure that parents were aware of the opportunity. And even if a student didn't come to summer school, we allowed them to come take the assessments, even if they didn't come. Because some parents did, you know, if they had a conflict. I mean, that is the thing. We wanted to give them every opportunity to be able to be promoted for good cause. But, you know, the schools sent out emails, they sent out letters, they made phone calls. We contacted the schools to make sure that they were calling all of those, and Ms. McLeeny and I both did, to make sure that they were contacting the parents of these students. So I think there was a lot of effort to get the word out that it was eligible, they were eligible, but some did not come. They're not required to. They just know if they don't come, they're going to be retained. But if a student wasn't able to come, we did allow them to come take the ISIP, or they had the July PM1 FAST or the July FAST assessment again.
Ms. Dell, you've been wonderful, Ms. McLeeny, as well, the whole leadership team. However, I want specifics. I want to know what this administrator or whomever did at this school? In fact, all of them. I'm not so concerned about Archer with 1, but when we start looking at 14 and 10 and 11, and when I got to the bottom and saw 30, I thought, my, 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 my. What's going to be different for those students in third grade even again? I understand the law. I know that. But what's going to be different because come at the end of 2026 summer, I would expect these numbers not to look like this, period? Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Dell, you might stay. I didn't ask my question correctly. So thank you for whoever presented the sheet to me, right? And what I should have asked, now that I've looked at this, is this is good, and I wanted that, but I should have asked how many students had been retained by each school? Like in total? Because in... No, no, no. We... No, no. How many were actually, like the total number that were retained right here? These are students who came to summer school. See, because I asked how many who came to summer school and how, you know, who were... Who was promoted based on good cause. So but I really, what I really... I wanted to know that, but I also wanted to know how many were actually retained and all.
Sorry.
You know, like that were eligible to come and that they...
And the number, the number that in the column, third grade students scored a Level 1, were retained at the end of the school year. Those were the ones that were retained at the end of the regular school year. That would be column, the second column, if I'm looking at the same report, and I...
Is that...
Oh, wait. Nope, sorry. I take that back. That is something I have. Number of students retained after summer school. I do have the data of the number of students retained. I do have that.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you did. That's like, but so that what it just what, we didn't have it. So that was... And also, thank you, thank you for this. Like, but would y'all total y'all columns?
Oh, I, I, yes. On my column?
It's like a little thing, but I had my calculator, so I was able to run.
Well, you can also do it because it's a Google Doc. You can do the sum.
Well, I actually could not do it with this because I couldn't access it.
Oh.
And so I didn't get it, and so someone printed it and gave it to me. So I could, yeah, you're right, I could, because I did that on another one. But so I'm going to... Ms. Playback, you want to go before I go get on with my litany?
Did you still need me or...
I don't know.
Maybe.
You might want to just stand there.
I'll just stand here.
So I'm looking at middle and high. So my question is, the kids that participated in the middle school CROP, were those kids, and maybe Ms. Ritter, Ms. McLeeny, were those kids not on target to go to high school? Or were they already down credit, Shannon? Or...
The only way they can participate in the CROP program is if they have failed a course. And so that's what qualifies them to participate. So let's say they failed English... Or something. They got an F one semester, maybe they got a B second semester, whatever. They can make up that half credit at a time through the CROP process. But to do CROP, you have to have first failed the course.
So if they didn't pass, the middle school didn't pass the CROP, would they still be going on to high school?
So priority is always the eighth grade at the middle school. That's who the schools are going to work with first to try to get them pulled in. And I'm not sure I can answer the question about what happens if they didn't indeed pass through CROP.
Middle school students have to earn, they don't earn credits, they earn units, and they earn units in those core classes. So to be able to be promoted to ninth grade, they have to have three science units, three social studies units, three English units, three math units. I think the simple answer to your question is if they don't have the equivalent of 12 units, three in each of those areas by the end of their eighth grade year, are they promoted? The simple answer is no.
Okay.
They have to earn that.
And those would have been the kids that would have been in this middle school?
That would have been some, but we also work to... We know that sixth and ninth grade are those transition years, and so when students, if they're behind on units or credits at those years, then we need to be... That really needs to be a major push to get them on target for graduation and promotion. But I would imagine that the majority of those students were likely eighth grade students.
Okay, and then high school, did you just target the seniors that were needing graduation? Or what I was concerned about is when Mr. Shalnut shared with us how many incoming ninth graders are Level Ones that are coming into our high schools? And were they given the opportunity maybe to have, since this was literacy, to have some type of work done? Because there's a lot of Level Ones coming into high school this year. So I didn't know if that was used at all with them.
Okay, for, I'll answer the first part, which is we target seniors first. So if somebody's a credit or a half credit from graduating, that's who the high schools work with first, try to get them in that first round of anybody coming to participate in the summer school CROP. If they've gotten their seniors, and they go kind of down the list from there, the question about ninth grade, I'll defer to Dr. Adrian.
I think another piece to keep in mind is that our, we did the cluster sites, but even if we hadn't done the cluster sites, each high school gets X number of seats. And depending on the size of your school, you'll get more seats because you have more students. So yes, seniors are always targeted first. I don't like the way I just said that, but you know what I, you know what I meant? And but I think it's also fair to say that even though we provide the opportunity to seniors first, there is always room for the juniors and then the lowerclassmen as well, generally right away. But certainly as we progress through, yeah, again, the, the goal is to, for those transition years, but of course for any student.
And then one more question about seniors. So how much time are they given to retrieve credits after their quote graduation date? So if they were supposed to graduate in 2025, and they are down two credits, which is four classes essentially, or one-year class, two of those, how much time does the state give them to get a diploma? Or do they then have to go and get it somewhere else?
I think it depends on, so if they're a student who is staffed exceptional student education, they have additional time past their, their year. Dr. Edwards, correct me, 21, 22? Dr. Edwards, correct me, 21, 22? But for students who do not have that staffing, then typically it's really until... Sometimes will... It depends on when they turn 19. Let's put it that way. And for many students, it might simply just be when the credit retrieval program ends during the extended school year.
So when somebody says they have a, like Newbury High School, 100% graduation rate, everybody was on target or graduated within the timeframe it was given?
Correct.
Right, or went to... Yeah, could have gone to another school. Dr. Edwards?
Just wanted to add because the schools are not required to have students beyond... I'm sorry. Students are... The schools are not required to allow students to go beyond if they've had four years within high school, if they're over 18, to keep them in that fifth year. Permission has to be granted for those students. But those kids who did not meet graduation requirements can come in the summer, and they can still, even if that were testing, they can go up through the first day of the new school year. They have until the end of that summer, even beyond summer school, in order to earn the credit and still graduate.
That's all me now? All right, thank you. Thank you again, staff, okay. And thank you all for getting the answers to Dr. Patton to get to me. I had some challenges accessing some of the sheets. So I might go over some of these again. Sorry. Okay. And I want, like with my colleagues, I want us to... Maybe we agree on that, that attendance really... We... That we charged Dr. Patton with creating an attendance campaign. Her and Ms. Johnson. I mean, it's... School has already started, and it's a month in. But I was at Metcalf last week for their first... It wasn't really a B S I meeting, but with the state. And they already have some students that have some attendance challenges, right? And so I was kind of like saying to the Dr. Owen and his admin team that I was asking questions as to what were they doing? I asked about attendance. And I learned that they already kind of have some kids that are already have missed five days. And I was like, what y'all doing? And they kind of ran through like some things that they were going to do. And, you know, I felt like because they had attendance challenges at the end of 24, 25, kind of like they could have picked the baton up this year and started running. Like, we don't need to do an assessment. We already know what our challenges are and who the heavy hitters are. But I'm wanting, I'm wanting to put to you all, and to Dr. Rockwell and Mr. Vu, that maybe that be one of our initiatives this year. It's late to, you know, it's not too late, but it's the school year has started. But that we develop an attendance campaign. And the reason I say that when I ask, and I've kind of alluded to it, I bet if we were to go back and look at attendance data for our lowest performing students and at some schools, it's going to be consistent with what's here. I mean, right? And I always ask about, you know, the ABC report was why I kept asking, so...
It's on Tuesday's principal meeting, actually. Attendance.
Yeah.
So that we're not letting the year go by before we stop and say, where are we and what are we doing?
Right, yeah. So I don't know. I mean, I'm not the communications guru, but I'm thinking we've got to use all the modes that we can, you know, PSAs, you know, the paper is out, but, you know, internet, what... I don't, I mean, RTS, ask the city to put it on the bus, you know, and I... And the reason I'm saying that...